Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Trustees December 7, 2020 Board Meeting. Will everyone please join me in the pledge to our flag? I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the state, to the nation, to God, to the invisible, to liberty and justice.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Luise.
Present. Tonight, we're going to begin our meeting by, we have two appointments to make. First appointment is to the Sign-in Morning Board. Patricia Costa with an unexpired term ending August 1, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
April.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And our next appointment...
Mayor Luise, I just wanted to point out that Patricia Costa is here if you would like to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Patricia.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
It will be my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for stepping into this very important role, as you probably are aware of, especially that it's such one, it's one of the boards that it's unique in the sense where it only meets in the afternoon during the week. So we thank you for taking on this responsibility and we are sure you will be an asset to the Sign-in Morning Board.
I look forward to it, and I do look forward to meeting all of you in person at the right time, of course.
Yes, it's on its way.
That's right.
Being positive. Is there any board members who'd like to comment at this time?
No, just again to say thank you. These boards are really important to the village, a lot of work, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Our second appointment this evening is to the Planning Board, an ad hoc position, and that will be for Ayesha Scholes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And again, I thank you, Ayesha, for your volunteerism. Again, this is a very, very important board that you are a member of, and we look forward to your service.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, and thank you for the appointment.
Hi.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Yes, congratulations, Ayesha. Congratulations.
So proudly, the board can say that every position on our Sign-in Morning Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board, all those positions have been filled. So again, I thank everyone for volunteering. I thank the existing members who have served so well over the past few years, and I thank you for your continued service. So with that, we're going to move on to our presentations. And tonight, the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee will have a brief presentation on beekeeping here in the village of Tuckahoe.
Good evening, Mayor Luise, members of the board, and newly appointees. We are joined here with members of the Tuckahoe and Environmental and Sustainability Committee to support Erin Provenzano and her presentation regarding the keeping of honeybees in Tuckahoe. This presentation will be available for future reference on our website, which is t-e-s-c-tuckahoe.org. Let me repeat that. That's t-e-s-c-tuckahoe.org. We kindly ask for your attention, and I would like to introduce Erin Provenzano.
Everyone.
Erin, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm Erin Provenzano, and I'm a member of the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee. I also happen to be a beekeeper and have been enjoying this hobby for three years on this April. Tonight, I'll be speaking to you about inordinants and registration forms that we have submitted to the board in regards to keeping honeybees in Tuckahoe. This ordinance would ensure proper management of honeybee hives kept by residents and/or businesses within the village. I'm going to be giving a brief presentation where I'll be discussing honeybees, education, and the implementation of a pilot program as well as resources, so you can learn more about honeybees yourself. Let me just start by sharing my screen. Oh. Am I able to share my screen? I just have like a presentation. Okay, great. Can everyone see my screen? Give me a thumbs up.
Yep.
Great, awesome. So... I'm going to begin by just giving a brief introduction to honeybees in general, and then talk about the education and pilot program piece, and also touch on some resources that you can use to learn more about honeybees, as well as like a virtual beehive tour that you can go on in your spare time. So I always want to start off any talks about honeybees with this image, because many times when people say to me... Many times when people say to me, "I am scared of bees. Bees are aggressive. I hate bees." They're usually talking about this little creature over here, and that's actually a yellow jacket, which is a type of wasp. And as you can see, this is a honeybee, which is a type of bee. And bees and wasps are related, but they aren't obviously not the same. And as you can see, there was like a little link that was popping up. Massachusetts Audubon has a great, I could even share the link with you after I talk. It has a great reference page talking about all the different types of bees and wasps in our area. And that includes social bees, solitary bees, social wasp, solitary wasp. There's a lot of different types of native bees. But again, tonight, I'm going to be talking about the European honeybee. And I just want to mention, because many people are afraid of bees in general, and they're usually afraid because of the idea of stinging. Honeybees, if a bee stings you, a honeybee stings you, it's only going to sting you once because it dies after it stings you. They have a barbed stinger, so when it stings you, it pulls them apart and they die. A yellow jacket, on the other hand, does not have a barbed stinger. So they can sting you multiple times, and they are actually pretty aggressive. Honeybees are not aggressive. Also, yellow jackets are the ones that are annoying you at your picnics outside, especially in late summer, early fall. They're the ones that are going after, you know, your cold cuts, they're going after sodas. They're scavengers. So they go after, you know, those things, whereas honeybees are really, their mission is to gather pollen and nectar and bring it back to their hive. So though you can be stung by a honeybee, it's less likely than being stung by a yellow jacket. Yellow jackets are very aggressive. So I just always want to start with that, because usually when people are talking about bees, they really mean wasps, and specifically, yellow jackets. So we're talking about European honeybees, also known as Apis mellifera. They're native to Europe, the Middle East, and Africa, and they are social bees. There's a social hierarchy. So it's composed, the hive is composed of workers, drones, and the bees, which I will name in the next slide. So this is a queen bee. This is not part of, you know, that's not natural, that blue dot. That's something that beekeepers sometimes do, where they'll put a dot on the queen with a specific color. And it's really meant to help us be able to see her better, because when you're looking at a frame of honeybees, they're moving kind of quickly, so it's hard to spot her. But as you can see, she looks different than a worker bee. She's pretty long. There's only one queen in a hive. There can only be one queen in a hive. And this, this is a worker bee. So these are the bees you'll see flying around. You'll see them on the flowers, collecting nectar and pollen. These are, these are the bees that unfortunately, if you do get stung, you're getting stung by a worker bee. They are like the majority of the hive. There are thousands of worker bees. And this is a drone. And the drones are, they don't do the foraging, they don't do the work of the hive, but they're very important for genetic diversity. They will mate with other, you know, queens of other hives. So drones are the male bees in a honeybee hive, and the worker bees are female. And obviously, the queen is female as well. I just wanted to show you like a snapshot of the life cycle of honeybees. So it starts out with an egg. It almost looks like a very small rice grain. And within 21 days, it emerges as a full-fledged bee. So it goes from egg to larva to pupa, and then emerges. And the worker bee has many different roles. Some of them are nurse bees, so they deal with the brood, like the baby bees. Some of them are undertakers, so they'll take the dead bees out of the hive. Bees are very meticulous, very organized, full of order. Everything's about order, and they all have roles. So, you know, they have these different roles for themselves, and obviously, the queen is the one laying the eggs. So that was just a brief, a very brief overview of honeybees. And that's kind of a segue into the education piece. So I currently work at Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts Heart of the Hudson. And I've done many programs, especially in the past few years, in person, virtually, through the libraries, and also with, you know, scouts, Girl Scouts. And most recently, these are actually pictures from a bee program I did at the beginning of November. And this is actually the Tuckahoe Eastchester Girl Scout House that we're at. And, you know, I was letting the girls hold frames and look inside of them. And one of the girls over here, she's holding their epoxied honeybees. So it's like preserved honeybees, and looking at the pollen and everything like that, looking at honey itself. And it's, at almost every program I've done, virtually, in person, through the libraries, or not, I always hear at the beginning, especially from, you know, younger crowds, like, "Oh, I hate bees. I'm scared of them." They're, they give every story they've ever known about a bee. And then by the end of the program, they end up, you know, fascinated by it and wanting to learn more. I know in this specific instance, the girls were telling me every story, about every scary story they ever heard about a bee, either for them, from themselves or someone they know. And then by the end of the program, they were pretending they were bees, and they were like very excited about it. So it's really awesome, especially starting at a young age, exposing, you know, kids to nature and, in this case, honeybees. It's really amazing and important. So that being said, we are thinking, you know, one of our objectives in the ordinance is to have a pilot program where we'd be collaborating with schools and local businesses. So there have been a couple businesses, Broken Bow and Spring Hill Suites, that have expressed interest in, you know, having hives on their properties, you know, probably on their rooftops. And this might be an opportunity to partner with our schools and bring students into learning about bees while also benefiting the business. So for example, I just wanted to show this. At Mamaroneck High School, this is from 2018, they implemented this, it's a state's only scholastic beekeeper program. And it's still going strong, because when I had done a program in, at the Mamaroneck Library this past summer, I was speaking to the librarian, and she said that it's actually like embedded itself into the culture in Mamaroneck, like beekeeping. So it's very, it's a really fascinating hobby, but it's also an excellent teaching tool, because, you know, you're seeing the science behind it all. It is really a fascinating hobby. So it's important to get our youth connected to it, as well as, you know, the general population. So that's something that we're, you know, hoping to implement through this ordinance. Just some more pictures of bees, so you can see them up close. This is called festooning, where they're, they hold on to each other while they're actually excreting wax to create honeycomb. And as you can see in the cells, it's very hard to see, but these are little eggs, and this is the larva. And again, bees are fascinating on so many levels. Science level, mathematics, there's a whole, there are so many studies on, you know, storage space of the honeycomb. And it's just, there's so much information out there.
Hi, Erin.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to disturb your presentation. There are several people, since David gave you the rights as host, only you can let people in. Can you just...
Oh, oh my gosh, yeah. I'm so sorry, yeah.
No, no, it's not your fault. Sorry about that.
No, no, no problem. I think I admitted them.
Okay.
I'll definitely keep my eyes on that now. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. So that being said, there are so many resources out there. Do your research. Start at your local library. Tuckahoe Library has many resources, but even if they don't have a resource you want, you can put a hold on it and pick it up from them. There are so many different books, periodicals. This, the American Bee Journal is very interesting, pretty scientific, but a lot of great information in here. And then there are all different kinds of books, you know, beekeepers' book, and just in general, many different books. So I really encourage you to check things out at the library. Also, check out the TESC website, you know, specifically, our news and events, news and blog, and everything that we're up to. And, you know, there's, I added YouTube videos in here. One of them is a virtual beehive tour, so you can get the view inside of a beehive. And another one is a presentation I did for the library. So I just wanted to mention that. And does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Hello. Good evening. My name is Lorraine. I have a question about the parking.
Lorraine, that's not, this is not the time for that.
Oh, okay.
It's just about bees right now.
It's about what?
Bees.
Oh, okay. I just...
Beekeeping. You'll have an opportunity, Lorraine, you'll have an opportunity in just a few minutes.
Okay, well, I just joined, so I didn't know if it was discussed.
That's quite all right.
All right.
Having nice fingers and a private last-hand check.
No.
So if anyone has any questions, they could always, you know, send a message or ask later. But I just want to thank you again for...
Can we ask everyone to please mute if you're not, if you're not speaking right now?
Too bad, that's in commerce.
Can someone, can everyone please mute?
Wait, wait, wait.
Can you mute everyone? David, you are not David, no.
Take it back, David.
If I can get the host back, I will mute people.
Yeah.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Is Harman, is Harman on? Harman has a brief announcement for the board, Greg Luise.
I'm sorry.
Hey.
Harman has a statement.
I have an update. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes. So if you remember last week, Jasmine, last meeting, last month, Jasmine came and presented, she gave a presentation on Westchester Power about the community choice aggregation.
Harman, we're on bees right now.
Yes, yes, but it's a part of the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee Initiative.
Okay.
Just an update, if you guys, you know, I don't, right? So basically, as a part of that, after the presentation, we had a Zoom meeting to tell people about what's happening. And subsequently, the application was presented to Department of Public Service. And today, I got the word that it has been approved.
Great. Good news.
So what's going to happen next is we are going to send out details to the board member and a sample agreement to the lawyer, and then you can take a look, and you'll need to pass a resolution for that, probably next meeting or so.
Great. Thank you, Harman.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, does anyone have any questions regarding beekeeping? Okay. So we can move on. We will now move on with our agenda items. There being no public hearings, I'll move on to the adoption of minutes for the November 9, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And at this time, this is the first opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board on any agenda item. Lorraine?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, Lorraine. Please state your name and address, please.
Lorraine Dukes, 31 Midland Place. Okay, I was asking a question about the parking. The sign's going to be turned around.
Okay. That is a question for our Chief of Police. And what signs are you specifically referring to?
The street parking, which they usually turn them around on December 1, I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, ma'am. Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please, Chief. I know, I think I saw Mark and Elliot out there today putting up the signs.
Yeah, so we did start flipping the signs, which we do the first couple of weeks in December. We try to wait for all the leaf pickup to be done, and then we begin flipping the alternate side, the street parking. So in the next week to 10 days, we should complete flipping all the signs, and they will not be in effect all winter long. It will go back in effect in the spring, sometime after March 31, and we will give warnings to all our residents when that happens.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public have any questions? They'd like to address the board? And again, this is on agenda items right now at this point.
Never mind.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, going to move on to resolutions. Resolution number one is authorizing free short-term parking in the businesses, districts of the village to encourage local shopping during the holidays on all Saturdays of December and the week of December 21 through the 26. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang. Trustee Lang.
He's on mute. You're on mute then.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, folks. In favor?
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing a bond resolution dated December 7, 2020, authorizing the issuance of up to $408,000 in aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of motor vehicles, the completion of a comprehensive master plan, and the planning of sewer improvements all in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing a bond resolution dated December 7, 2020, authorizing the issuance of up to $708,900 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of communications equipment, the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of sidewalks, and the construction and reconstruction of various building improvements all in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a bond resolution dated December 7, 2020, authorizing the issuance of up to $969,000 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance, the construction and reconstruction of improvements to village streets, and the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of... the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of park improvements all in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing a bond resolution dated December seventh, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of up to six hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven hundred dollars aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of traffic signals for the village. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. All right, we're going to do this again. Resolution number six is authorizing a bond resolution dated December seventh, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of up to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred dollars aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of improvements to the village buildings. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. Now bring us to resolution number seven, which is authorizing a bond resolution dated December seventh, twenty twenty, authorizing the issuance of up to two hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of village sewer system improvements. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. And just for everyone's um benefit, what we have just done is authorize uh the borrowing of three point two million dollars in bonds for all of these various improvements, which you have just heard me mention um with these various resolutions. Um the reason, one of the main reasons is the interest rate is incredibly low. Um these are bonds that would be paid out over a thirty-year span. This is um, this is not a wish list of of things that we're looking to improve or buy or repair here in the village. These are things that are necessary to keep this village running the way it has been running. Um I'll just ask David if you could just, if you'd like to just expound upon that just a little? Or did I pretty much hit all the high points?
No, you 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 hit the high points. I just want to, you know, kind of clarify just for everyone out there. Um this process has been going on, looking at bonding, looking at financing for well over a year now. Um we really took a hard look at our facilities. Um the plans that we need to do, our infrastructure, both inside and outside, both underground that no one sees and above ground. Um these, this is, this is definitely not a wish this, this is a well-thought-out kind of plan for the next four to five years in regards to bonding. Um so there's a, there's a quite a bit on here from doing a comprehensive plan to doing upgrades to at least three traffic signals and some technological upgrades to some other traffic signals. Um putting money into facilities that are tired and needed in including the library and some of the bathrooms and flooring at Village Hall um to street resurfacing that, um you know, we can never keep up on that. So as the interest rates are so low right now, to try to get some um some of the money to do some of the infrastructure repairs onto that um to playground equipment at the Main Street Park. So this is kind of a wide variety of projects for the next four years. And again, we've been looking at this internally and with the board for for well over a year now. Um just to clarify, uh this will be paid back around fifteen years. It kind of aggregates itself out to about a fifteen-year payback period. Um we do, we are going to refinance another bond and save about ten thousand dollars a year on that payback as well. Because right now it looks like interest rates are about one point two five to one point three percent. And everyone knows it's just, you know, it's a time to to strike that, you know, do the refinancing, borrow this money, look out for the next four years. So um there's a, there's a lot on here. There's a lot of work to to be done in regards to these. But um I think uh this is kind of a well-thought-out plan for the village for the next five years.
Thank you, David. Would any of the board members like to comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank the mayor and and um and David for um, you know, bringing the village up to speed. Uh it's, it, there's a lot, it's a lot of money, it's, you know, a lot of bonds, but I think this is the time with the interest rates being so low, and um I want to thank David for all his hard work. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for explaining that, and David as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's also important to note that there are many items that we want to take care of before it becomes more expensive. Uh if we don't address some of these these issues now, they will become even more costly. So it's better that we address them before they get to that point.
And one of the things that we said, uh, well, I think I said it at the work session. Um, you know, we're not going to, this this reality that we're in now, it's going to change. It's going to change for the better eventually. So these are our long-term goals that that um we're looking to achieve. And it's, and the, at the end result is going to benefit everyone that lives here in the village. And thank you for listening to the same line seven times. I'm probably repeated tonight in my sleep. But anyway, moving on to resolutions number eight, which is authorizing a tax sociability settlement with Tavalilla Realty for assessment years twenty sixteen through twenty twenty with a street address of one twenty-five Columbus Avenue, section thirty-four point five, block five, lot one, in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
Thank you.
In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing a tax sociability settlement with Tavalilla Realty Corp. for assessment years twenty sixteen through twenty twenty with the street address of one thirty-five Columbus Avenue, section thirty-eight, block ten, lot one A in the amount of three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number ten is authorizing a tax sociability settlement with Amtech Realty Corporation, also known doing business as Phoenix Fitness for assessment years twenty fifteen through twenty twenty with a street address of one thirty-five Marbledale Road, section thirty-five, block one, lot one in the amount of six thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that'll bring us to resolution number eleven, which is authorizing the mayor to sign an inter-municipal agreement between the County of Westchester and the Village of Tuckahoe as it relates to the stop DWI patrol, excuse me, data master, data master project for a grant not to exceed eight thousand four hundred dollars per year. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that'll bring us to resolution number twelve, which is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of one million four hundred and ninety-three thousand eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
Favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor. Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that concludes our resolutions for the evening. I don't believe we have any items up for discussion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And that will bring us to our departmental reports, and I will begin with Chief of Police, John Costanzo.
Evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just an announcement along the lines with parking. Uh in addition to obviously removing the alternate side of the street parking signs that I mentioned earlier, we do install snow zone uh parking signs prohibits parking during a snowfall. So from the moment snow begins to fall until twelve hours after snow ceases to fall, there's no parking on those designated streets. Those signs will be uh going up again in the next week or so. Uh and uh just to remind everybody that it doesn't matter the amount of precipi- frozen precipitation uh is from the moment it starts, when our DPW trucks are out there, uh there's no parking on those specific streets. There's a seventy-five dollar fine attached to that prohibition. So we urge residents to please pay attention to the weather forecasts and be mindful of the fact that they have to move their cars from those streets. Um in addition, starting December first, so this past week, uh there's no parking on the business streets overnight from three AM to six AM. We issued one week of warnings to violators of that specific law. And this week, we have begun to issue uh parking violations. So on any business street where generally where there are parking meters, there is that prohibition for overnight parking from three AM to six AM. And again, that is in the winter months uh to facilitate snow removal when it does snow. And that's really my report. I just want to wish everybody a very happy holiday season, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, um and whatever you believe so. I hope it's a joyful season for everyone. And that's my report, ma'am.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Frank DiMarco, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Frank.
I'm going to follow up with with John and no parking signs for snowfall. Um I usually make my winter prediction this time every year. And no one ever really cares, but you know, my prediction this year is that I'm not going to make a prediction.
I I made it for you.
I did that last year, and I think we had only one inch of snow. So listen, for the children's sake, I hope they get some snow, but for my sake, um I'm not going to make a prediction. Uh but I'd like to, first, I want to thank Erin, you know, uh Erin, people don't realize what she does. I mean, the presentation was amazing, and you know, she's involved in all these committees. Uh she's involved in our committee and and so many other committees within Westchester County that people really don't realize how involved she really is. But I I just want to say thank you to her for all she does. Um I also want to talk about leaves. Um leaf vacuuming is is has ceased for the remainder of the year. Uh we're just cleaning up what we have. Um I think we made our final rounds, so I'm asking everyone to either bag. Uh you can throw the leaves in a barrel, which will probably be easier for everybody. Um and whatever, whatever you can use to make it easier for yourself and for the DPW workers. I just ask that you make it safe for them as well. Uh food scrap recycling, I just want to touch on food scrap recycling. Uh my foreman Joe Tavalilla has been surveying and monitoring um the quantities and the weights, and it it's really starting to take off. The weights are climbing every week slowly. So I want to say thank you to all those that have been involved. Um and at some point, hopefully throughout throughout this new year, uh we'll work on curb site pickup. Um but with that said, we just want to take it one month at a time right now. Um also, that's all I really have. Well, one more thing. Um we have our our sixth annual toy drive at DPW, uh which we do every year. And the drop-off box is at the community center and also at the DPW facility. Toys are for ages six to twelve, and it'll cease December twenty-third, which is our last, uh we ask everybody to have the last drop-off. And and those are for local, local children within our community, and they'll be dispersed accordingly. We usually work with E-CAP, and they'll help us distribute all these toys uh to these age groups between six and twelve. If you have any questions, feel free to call us at DPW. But again, the 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 boxes for the drop-off sites are at the community center and also at the DPW facility. And with all that said, I just want to wish everybody, myself and DPW, uh want to wish everybody a healthy and happy holiday. And uh we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Frank. Um Camille, do you have anything first?
Yes, I do. Uh just wanted to remind everyone that taxes are due December thirty-first. Failure to receive a bill does not waive penalties, so please, if you haven't received a bill, contact me because they are due December thirty-first. And I uh would like to wish everyone a joyful, healthy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. And if I may, um as of right now, I maybe I should save this for later, but as of right now, Village Call is still open to the public for uh general business. Uh we'll keep, you know, the public informed via our website and uh cable TV if that situation is going to change because of COVID. But uh as as of right now, please, yep, as Mr. Salvo said, please get that money in. And that'll bring us to our village attorney, Mr. Gary Gersting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um just following up on that, the court, the court is open, but to access the court, uh you need to basically have an appointment. Uh there's very specific times. If you have a court hearing coming up, they'll send you a notice with a very specific time. You can't be early, can't be late. Uh we're just trying to keep the number of people uh in Village Hall down at any given time. If there's parking violations that people want to talk about, again, very specific times, contact the um court clerk and they'll be able to uh give you those times or give you an appointment to come in and uh uh be before the court. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Mr. David Burke, our village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything specific. I have a couple of things on my list, but I believe board members will go through them, so I'm going to jump back in if um if they're not mentioned.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um I'll bring us to miscellaneous business. Our next village board meeting will be January eleventh at seven PM. Rest assured, it will be via Zoom. And with that, uh it's time for our Board of Trustees member reports, and we'll begin with trustee Omira Andino.
Thank you, Mayor. Um first, I want to thank the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee for all the work that they're doing on behalf of the residents and the environment. I think that um people probably are not aware of the kind of commitment that the members have, but I see it all the time. They take this, the charge as a committee seriously. I appreciate the work that they do, so I wanted to mention that. Um a few library updates. A few library updates. For those of you who are not aware, browsing and computer access to the library has been suspended until further notice. Window pickup is still available by appointment only, so you can have window pickup hours are Monday 11 to 7, Tuesday through Friday 11 to 5, and you can call the library at 914-961-2121, or email tuk reference@wlsmail.org. So if you're interested in that information, also, the library is offering mobile hotspots. If you need Wi-Fi to go, you can call to check one, check out one today. Again, at the number 961-2121. I will put that number in the chat box for those of you who might be able to benefit from that, and that's a really great service that the library is offering for free. They have the Children's Recurring Program, Storytime for Baby Time up to two years old, Tuesdays at 11:00, and the Kid Storytime from two to five-year-olds are Fridays at 11:00 a.m. The Fall Session ends on Wednesday, on December 11th, and the Winter Session will resume beginning January 12th. There's also yoga for kids on Wednesday, December 9th for pre-k, ages two to five at 11:00, and for kids ages six to 10 at 4:00 p.m. I really encourage you, if you are going stir-crazy with the kids at home, they have a lot of great virtual programs at the library. Take advantage of them. They're free and accessible to everyone who's able to get on. There's also a special program with the Greenberg Nature Center online on Tuesday, tomorrow, December 8th at 4:00, ages six to 10. Students will investigate how local wildlife uses physical and behavioral adaptations, such as camouflage and hibernation to survive. That should be really interesting for the kids. There are some other, there are some other programs for the kids that you can look up online. There's also a tweens and teens special program to become a game designer. So Questers will begin, will be given a design prompt. They'll have a two-hour crash course on developing a game, so that's that sounds like something that would be really fun for your teens and tweens. And for the adults, there is virtual meditation on Wednesdays at noon, December 9th and 16th. There's still online chair yoga, and there's still plenty for the for people, residents of all ages that the library offers, so I encourage you to go on, see what might benefit you. I also want to inform the residents, some may already know, but there is a Tuckahoe Commission on Police Reform in response to the governor's executive order that was issued in June for a committee in every municipality in New York State. There are 500 municipalities to develop a plan to to address police reform in each in each community. And one of the big mandates of this 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 executive order is community engagement and community input. So I'm really encouraging, and the committee is encouraging, for the village residents and stakeholders, businesses and and such, to give feedback about what the police department's role in Tuckahoe should be. What do we envision, and what's our vision for the police and community relationships? So we've had two public meetings so far, November 12th and December 3rd. We are, we will be meeting as and having the the committee will meet to have a work session this Thursday. Again, we've had several to develop. We're talking about developing a survey to solicit feedback from residents, and we ask that you complete it. We're thinking about either mailing it out, putting it on the website, or both. And if you'd like to provide a written statement, if you have questions, if you have suggestions for what you would like the committee to review or put into the plan, you may email us, and I'll also put that in the chat box. You can email us at tuckahoprrc@tuckahoe-ny.com, or you can just use regular old snail mail and send it to Village Hall at 65 Main Street to the care of Tuckahoe Commission on Police Reform. So I really encourage everyone to get involved, be a part of your community, give feedback if you really want your voice to be heard. I also want to acknowledge that Westchester County had a Ribbons of Remembrance Ceremony held on December 3rd in remembrance of those who lost their lives to COVID. And to quote the county executive George Latimer, more than 1,500 people were alive on Valentine's Day that are gone now. We had people in Tuckahoe touched by COVID, some who died, and they were people. They weren't cases, they were people. Their loved ones are suffering this holiday season. I also think it's important to acknowledge those on the front lines who are putting their lives at risk every day, to care for those who are sick in the hospital and at home. And I saw an ad where the nurse depicted saying, she said, "I'm tired. Please wear a mask." That was the entire ad, and it really reminded me that so many are not just physically exhausted, they're emotionally exhausted seeing death all around them. We've had a very difficult year, so I, you know, I just say, please, let's honor them by continuing to take all the precautions. We've heard countless times, I don't need to go over them. And I'd also like to ask Mayor if it would be okay, if we could have a moment of silence for those who've passed away this year due to COVID and for other reasons. Family members have lost loved ones for COVID and various reasons. Can we have a moment of silence for that?
Sure.
Thank you, and I'd just like to wish everyone, as has been said already, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and I hope that everyone has a happy and healthy new year. And that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Andino. Deputy Mayor Lang.
Yes, hi, Mr. Mayor. How are you? Thank you. First, I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I'd like to start by taking a second to thank the VFW for their continued support for our veterans. It was another wonderful ceremony this morning, and, you know, can't say enough about our VFW up in Eastchester. They do a great job, you know, and just a reminder to everyone, remember, reflect, and respect their sacrifice. Also, it was nice to see our police department, which seemed to be a representation from each rank of our department. I saw police officers, detectives, sergeants, lieutenants, and of course, the chief was present, so that was nice to see, you know, representation from each rank. That was very nice. And a special thanks to a couple of residents of Four Union that I'm so grateful for, Ms. Noreen Yancy and Marvina Serrano, also known as Blondie. She's wonderful, for their help with this this year's Thanksgiving, and more importantly, for helping trustee Gina Lee help to facilitate the COVID testing that they recently did down for the residents of Four Union. We're very grateful to those residents, Ms. Yancy and Ms. Serrano. Also, thanks and welcome again to Patricia and Ayesha. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you, and happy holidays to all, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Danny. Trustee Howell.
Thank you. So as you heard, we are now fully staffed on our Planning, Zoning, and Sign and Awning Board, so that's always something to celebrate. The next zoning meeting will be December 9th. Working meeting starting at 6:30, the regular meeting at 7:30. Planning Board meeting is December 15th at 7:30, and Sign and Awning December 21st at 2:00 p.m. So on those agendas are things that I have spoken about before, so continuing the development, the site plan and variances associated with the Main Street Medical Building and the proposed demolition of the house on Underhill to convert to a parking lot. So and then continued projects on Marble Dale. So not too much new on that front. But as far as, you know, how we're operating on those boards, COVID has been a challenge, so one of the things we're gonna do in January is have a meet and greet across all of those boards. You know, the boards work often in conjunction. So in addition to knowing who in the village government they need to be in communication with, they also need to talk to each other. Before the recent appointments, we used to have one individual who would sit both on planning and sign and awning, and part of the rationale for that was because there has to be communication between the boards. So in talking to Patricia Costa this weekend, you know, she suggested that we actually hold workshops two times a year to bring all the board members together and talk about issues that cross the board. So that was a great suggestion, and we're gonna try to make the first one of those happen at the end of February. I also wanted to thank the beautification committee. You know, I was walking down the street last week when DPW was putting up all the beautiful holiday greenery, so that is always for me the moment of, you know, when it really hits that the holidays are here. And to thank all those who contribute to the beautification committee and make that possible. It really makes the village look lovely. There's a couple of really great programs at both the village level and the community level that folks should be aware of. The Bronxville Eastchester-Tuckahoe Stronger Together Coalition will be having a program tomorrow night by Zoom at 7:30 or 7:00 p.m., sorry. It's supporting mental health for teens during COVID. If you go to the Stronger Together website, or I'll have that information on my Facebook, too, you can go ahead and register for that meeting. A resident, Sarah DeReese, who is on the Westchester Women's Advisory Board, let us know that there's also going to be a Zoom meeting geared toward adults for staying sane in pandemic times. That is also tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m., and you can find that on the County Westchester Women's Advisory Board page, and I'll also post that on my Facebook page. We've been talking a lot about vaccines in the news, so I wanted to remind everybody that it's actually National Influenza Vaccine Week, and the recommendation by CDC is that anyone six months or older gets a vaccination. It's really important to get this flu vaccination, and really, up until February, it's worth getting. The county's gonna be holding two free vaccination sessions in White Plains at the County Clinic at 134 Court Street, January 14th and January 21st. You can make an appointment by calling 914-995-5800. And as a response to a couple of questions we've gotten on the COVID vaccines, which are imminent, I'm gonna be giving a presentation on that through the library at the beginning of February, so we'll be talking about the facts of the vaccine as well as the myths, so I look forward to interacting with everybody on that. I also wanted to give a shout out to Jackie Ferretti for doing an excellent job of turning around the parking permits this year. That was, you know, another thing that we had to change due to COVID, and from a lot of feedback I've gotten, it was very successful. So Jackie, thanks for making that happen. And last, I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. This is a strange time for sure, to echo what trustee Andino said, you know, in addition to all the doctors and nurses out there, laboratory technicians, also to those people who take care of other people, like, you know, in nursing homes and people who take care of people with disabilities through these times, and these places are very, very fragile right now. So, you know, when I think about this, we made some hard decisions in our family to not, you know, visit, have people come this year. I'm not gonna see two of my children, and it's really to just do everything we can to make sure that we, you know, don't contribute to making the lives of those people who are really on the front lines right now more difficult. So I just wanted to ask folks to really think about that this holiday season and to stay safe and, you know, have have safe, warm holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. And that'll bring us to trustee Gina Lee.
Good evening, everybody. First off, I would like to, just like Danny had mentioned, I would like to thank Noreen and Blondie for all their help the day of the COVID testing at Four Union. They were like two angels helping us out. Thank you again, Noreen and Blondie, if you're watching. I have a few things to report. First off, I'd like to mention how touched the members of the Tuckahoe Senior Center were to receive Thanksgiving dinners donated by the Armavilla Neighborhood Association, which were made by the quarry and delivered by our Tuckahoe Police Department with flowers in hand made by the Tuckahoe Florists. Second, tear to their happiness, the winners of the bingo games played on Thursdays in the month of November received beautiful baskets delivered to their home, which they were thrilled. Our gratitude Zoom meeting on November 24th was very moving. Members of the Bronxville Senior Center and the Bronx and the Tuckahoe Senior Center are so thankful that we have many programs to offer, and it is important lifeline for so many. On Thursday, December 17th, Santa, AKA Greg, will be paying us a visit to our Zoom caroling session at 2:45. The center will be closed for two weeks, the last day being December 22nd, and will reopen January 5th. I wanted to remind everybody about the unwrapped toy drive and drop-off at the Tuckahoe Community Center, like Frank had mentioned. Also, there will be another blood drive Saturday, February 6th. I will remind everybody in January, at the January meeting about that.
You're muted.
Sorry. With winter weather upon us and a lot of snow as per Silvio, Frank, he said that to me in passing, we will continue with the wonderful service which Sheila Markhat began in our town and villages, the Tuckahoe Snow Angels. This program pairs older residents and residents with disabilities with nearby teens and neighbors who volunteer to assist them with snow removal in their walkways and driveways. I will, I will be helping Sheila, along with Teresa Nicholson, organize and pair Snow Angels with residents in Tuckahoe, Eastchester, and Bronxville. I spoke with Dr. Amy Goodman, the Tuckahoe School Superintendent, and I will also reach out to Eastchester and Bronxville superintendents to gather some high school students to help us out. To make the program successful, we need people who would like this service to sign up and compare you, and we compare you with your very own Snow Angel. Please send an email to tuckahosnowangels@yahoo.com if you are interested. Also, please remember to shop local for the holidays. Gifts, gift certificates, our local businesses need us. On behalf of my family and myself, we wish all of you health, happiness, and peace during this holiday season and through the new coming new year, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna make a prediction, Mr. DiMarco, and I'm gonna count to Silvio. It's not gonna snow this year.
I caught him putting up the lights the other weekend, and he told me I was driving by.
So I hope I'm right about that, but anyway. On a more serious note, I also would like to acknowledge today Pearl Harbor Day, and I acknowledge the sacrifices that were made that day and appreciate the turnout that took place today at Eastchester Town Hall. I'd just like to inform the residents of the village, the people that live in the Marble Dale Apartments already know this, but we're quite excited that that building will be changing management companies the beginning of next year, and this new management company has secured funds to renovate all the apartments in Marble, the Marble Dale Apartments, as well as security updates, lobby updates. They're gonna renovate, they're going to refresh the playground area, so on and so forth. So I just would like to thank the Tuckahoe School District and the Eastchester Town Board for signing on board with us for this. It's going to be extremely beneficial for all the residents that live there, and obviously, their living conditions will be vastly improved when this project is completed. In terms of the beekeeping discussion that we've had, I would just like the committee to know that Donald LaMonica, that sat in on our work session last week, has volunteered his services if you feel that... has volunteered his services if you feel that they're needed, to ask him any questions. You know, as I've mentioned, you know, he has two hires at least, the last I saw up there in Chatham. So he'd be more than happy to work with you guys on, on the program. If I could just piggyback on what our village clerk mentioned earlier about paying taxes. It's not one of those things that you have to come into village hall to do. And I know everyone has, is reluctant because of our mail system, that it may not get there and things of that nature, but I think what eventually may happen is we may put a drop box outside if it gets to that because of COVID. But again, please, if you are going to come up into village hall, please be aware that you need to wear a mask. There's plenty of hand sanitizer on site so that you can keep yourself sanitized. And of course, obviously, we're looking to protect our village employees. And I would, again, like to echo what was said by my colleagues. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, happy Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, or however you celebrate. What knows we need to celebrate this year? And I want everybody at, on December 31st, to collectively kick 2020 out the back door and let it get on its way out of here. And that's all I have. And at this point, this is the next opportunity for anyone to address the board on any item.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, Reverend Gerald from Shiloh Baptist Church.
Yes, Reverend, how are you?
I have a question regarding the sewer improvements that you spoke about during, during your presentation. As you know, we've had some issues with the sewer system at Shiloh on two separate occasions, less than six months apart. Notably after two significant rainstorms, sewer backed up into the building on two separate occasions. The first occasion, DPW came and found that the line was clogged. Second occasion, the line wasn't clogged, it was just as a result of the downpour. My question is, with all of your proposed capital improvements by virtue of raising or going after bond funds, my, my question is whether or not the issues here on, on this line of this sewer system will be addressed with these funds. Because we can't continue to, to pay for the cleanup and the remediation of raw sewage backed up into our facility as a result of outdated, an outdated design in the sewer system. We, we need for the village to really take care of this sewer problem.
I think that's, Reverend, I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed by an engineer to determine exactly what the root problem is.
Is that something that the village is going to pay for? Because
Well, again, if, if, if it's village property, yes. If it's private property, no.
Well, rainwater should not be washing sewers into our building. So there has to be a design flaw. That's not my responsibility to re-engineer the sewer system. I think that's unreasonable.
Well, I, I, again, I would think we need to have a, an engineer look to see what the problem is.
Okay, again, my question is, is that on your dime? Because it's not going to be on my dime.
Could I just interject for a little bit?
Sure.
You know, we, we have done some research. We have called a company into camera the lines. This was only last week, so I'm just waiting on the results. So I can review the video and see if there's any faults or see if there's something I could pick up. We videoed an extensive section of Roger Street and Marble Dale Road. So just give me time to review it and I can get back with you. I mean, that's, it's a good start.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay.
Hello. Hey, hello, Mayor. My name is Courtney Sanderson. I live on 62 Washington Street. I just have a question about one of the resolutions. I noticed that you guys mentioned new structures for the Main Street Playground. Was the playground on the corner of Union and Washington, is that being considered for new structures as well? Because that park has not been replaced in years.
I'm trying to
So Mayor, if I can
Yeah, I was going to say, did we specifically earmark the, the Main Street?
So there, there is a reason for that. So a lot of our parks throughout Tuckahoe were upgraded through the CDBG funding. So when we recently got back into the program, we met with representatives from the county and they went through our parks and they went through the Circuit Avenue Park and the Main Street Park and the Union Park. And they have actually the history of when these were replaced. The Main Street Park is actually the oldest equipment out of all of them. And when you looked at the timeframes, it was very unlikely that we would have got a grant through CDBG for that specific equipment at this point. Usually they want to see it at least 20 years old before they would provide additional grants. So what we did this time is we went for the Main Street Park, and then it is definitely something that we'll look into next, grant funding, or if we do receive this and we got to get favorable pricing. We know that, you know, maybe we can, you know, fit something in there at that point. But this is all going to happen probably early next year. We have to see if we get the grant. And then if we do or don't, it depends on how much money we have. It's definitely something that we can look at. Just to also kind of further that point is that there is additional funding in this bond for some safety upgrades at the Circuit Park and Union Park. So some of the flooring, the ground needs to be kind of repaired. So that is in there, if not the equipment itself, but it's something that we're, we're, we're exploring.
I have a question. As residents, do we have access to that? Because I've been living in Tuckahoe for 38 years and the Main Street Park was definitely redone more recently than the Union Park. So is there like some information where I can see what they, what years they have printed down? Because that park services a lot of the kids who live on Washington Street and on Midland because they tend to not go to the Main Street Park. And it's a very, very small park and the structures are not, do not even seem safe for the kids who do go there. So if it's safety is a concern, I know a few times DPW had to come out and redo the fencing and put zip ties on it because the fencing continues to come off the poles.
Is that park, the park that you're referring to, is that under, isn't that a Four Union Park?
It's on the, it's not Four Union, so there's Yeah, it's that one.
No, I know the one you're referring to, yes.
Yes, the grass is there and then the park is a little further down. It's the one that last year they cut the trees and things down.
Right.
Yeah, that part.
Yeah, but David, we do have the history of, of when those parks were renovated, right?
I was just looking for it right now, but pardon me, it'll be something that I can either contact you, Courtney, and I, once I find that. If you want to email me or give me your number in the chat or something like that, I can get back with you.
Okay, I'll put it in the chat.
Thank you, Courtney. Anyone else?
Yes, hi, Ginger Crosby, Nine More Avenue. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Couple things, I just want to say that the brick facing on the Tuckahoe Community Center walls and library walls look phenomenal. What a nice improvement to see.
Say that again.
Yeah, and if anyone hasn't seen the new extension of our library garden, we have Frank's guys were doing a lot of work on the sidewalks and cutting back the trees and, and Nature's Cradle is coming in, has designed it. Take a walk over because that's a vast improvement also for the library grounds. We just have to get the people who have dogs who don't pick up after their dogs. I don't know how we do that, but that, that's a little disheartening. My second thing is, I was questioning is, I love the decorations that we put up for the holidays. Is there going to be a tree lighting this year?
The tree will be lit. I'll put it to you that way.
I don't know when though. I don't expect a big crowd, but I'm just curious what's, because it was noticeably dark when we passed.
I believe DPW is going to get to that this week, if I'm not mistaken.
But it's, it's not a specific anything, those.
I mean, you know, Ginger, I, I was talking with David about it and, you know, even some of the other board members. You know, to me, it's just sad that we can't do it the way we're used to doing it and I just, I just don't, I don't want to, I don't want to invite crowds. I don't want to
No, I can understand that. I just wondered if it's going to be lit at some point.
Oh, it will.
The lit tree, okay.
We were talking about doing a virtual, but it'd be all the two minutes on cable TV and, you know, it's sort of, I don't know, I think it, it rubs salt in the wound.
Right.
A menorah also is going to be lit in Main, right, that area, right?
Yeah, I think that's going to be Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Filmed. It will be filmed, so you can watch it on, on the channel. We should film the Christmas tree too.
I know, I know.
Try and ginger.
We have the elf on the shelf in the room here with us.
And we're looking forward to next year with all the library internal renovation with the grant money that Swadeesh was able to secure. So that's exciting for us also there. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Yes, thank you, Ginger, you as well.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any item?
Yeah, I would.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Anthony Fiori, three Midland Place, Tuckahoe. I just want to remind everybody about tomorrow, fire commissioner's election.
Yeah.
Between 2:00 and 9:00 PM at the Tuckahoe Community Center.
Thank you, Anthony. Anyone else? Well, that being done, may I please close this meeting by, once again, please asking everyone to wear your mask, maintain safe social distancing, keep those hands clean. As trustee Howell alluded to, the vaccine's around the corner. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Let's keep our, our eyes on that end game.
Also, Mr. Mayor, and I think we spoke earlier, usually at this time of year, we have a thank you to all the many volunteers who helped support the village and we, we weren't able to do that this year. So, but I think, you know, we may, when it gets to a safe time and certainly hopefully by next year, we'll be having a nice celebration. So just wanted to thank all of you for all of your volunteering.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, have a wonderful holiday season.
Have a holiday season, nice.
With that, do I have a second to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Until next time, good night, Tuckahoe.
Good night.
Good night. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.